Good evening, Mount Vernon. Sorry for the delay. We had some technical issues. Today is November twelfth, twenty twenty four. My name is Caitlin Gleason. I am City Council President for this year. Welcome to our working session. Just a little housekeeping rules. There's nobody really in the room tonight except our esteemed Fire Commissioner Deborah Norman. We have an emergency exit to the rear of the room and exit to at the front of the room. We also have an emergency stairwell outside the rear hallway. Directly outside the front door is a ladies' room. Down the hallway towards the rotunda is the men's room and another emergency stairwell downstairs. We also have an AED machine that is outside the planning department door. With that being said, I would ask, including myself, to turn your sound off on your phones. So we could begin with the tally sheet. Any questions? Without any questions, we will move on to legislation and public works. Councilwoman Danielle Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I have item number one, an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the audiovisual upgrade project to Justice AV Solutions, Inc. for City Council Chambers, City Council Committee Room, and the Memorial Room. I'm super excited about this. This is two years in the making. That we'll finally get some upgraded audio so that our residents at home could hear better, so that we can see presentations better. This is going to be fantastic. That is on the agenda.
I'm sorry, guys. Excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, guys. Can you turn up the the volume in the chambers that I I it's coming to be very, very muted?
Can you hear us now?
Barely.
Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Is that better?
How about now? Can someone speak?
Uh, is that better?
No, um, I'll just have to listen real closely, but I'm assuming that it's the it's the same volume for everyone listening.
Is anybody else on Zoom right now? Can they hear us?
Council President, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so Councilman Potteet, what I would recommend is maybe go out of the Zoom and come back in.
Come back in. Will do.
Thank you.
May I continue, Council President?
Yes, please.
Awesome. Thank you. I have item number two, which is an ordinance to award a contract for V O I P phone system to Spectrum and enter into a contract that is on the agenda. I have item number three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to retroactively enter into an emergency contractual agreement with PCI Industries, Inc. for immediate sanitary and stormwater sewer repairs at Fifth Avenue and Third Street. That is on the agenda. I have item number four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to retroactively enter into a contract agreement with PCI Industries for sanitary and stormwater sewer repairs at multiple locations. That is on the agenda. I have item number five, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the to the agreement with National Water Main Cleaning Company for sewer system cleaning and inspection in the Outfall twenty-four drainage area. That's going to be agenda pending. Um, one, because the I believe the budget code needs to be fixed from my conversation with Assistant Comptroller. But also, um, Corporation Council, does the current contract allow for this amendment? Or allow for this change order? I guess it's a question. If you can get that back to me. Um, and I guess my other question is, do we need to amend the contract or is there is there a supplemental change order that we are able to just add to the contract? Um, I don't have the contract, so I couldn't get those answers. But if you can provide that by tomorrow, that'd be helpful for us. Thank you. So that's agenda pending. Item number six, I have an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for an emergency study to addressing flooding at the intersection of South Third Avenue and South Columbus. Um, that is on the agenda. And just to provide clarity, we accepted the funding from FEMA uh, for the same intersection. And now this is just for the RFP to go out to receive somebody to actually do the work. Um, item number seven, I have an ordinance authorizing the release of a request for qualifications for engineering services related to the rehabilitation of the South Fulton Avenue Bridge. That is on the agenda. I have item number eight, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to co-sponsor the Fifth Annual Turkey Trot Five K Run Walk and authorizing assistance from the Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Safety. So that's agenda pending only because I saw responses from DPW and PD, but I didn't see a response from Fire. So just looking out for that. I'm sorry. Who? Oh, Commissioner. Oh, you're here. Um, have you seen the request for the Turkey Trot event? Okay, well, it is an annual event. You have no problem, so that's on the agenda. Thank you. Um, then we have item number nine, Department of Recreation and ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to co-sponsor the Abica International Food Festival and approve necessary city support services. So that is going to be called for only because we don't have responses from any of the departments. And that event is not until next year, so there's no rush. Uh, that concludes my report, Council President.
Um, any questions from anybody? I have a question. Item number four.
Yes, ma'am.
The retroactive repairs.
Yeah, they're retroactive because they're emergencies. So they entered into the contracts. They hired them because it was an emergency and now they're asking us to approve it.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? We have nothing for Human Resources. We go straight into Public Safety and Codes. Councilman Potteet, would you like to do that? Would you like your co-chair?
I'm sorry, guys. I can read and I'm happy to. I just can't hear anything. But give me one second.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm happy to.
Item number ten is for information purposes only, uh, from Consumer Protection, the September twenty twenty-four monthly report. Item number eleven is also for information purposes only from Consumer Protection. Item number twelve, from the Fire Department, and ordinance authorizing the renaming of Firehouse Station Number Two at four three five South Fulton Avenue in honor of Fire Lieutenant Joseph L. Miles, Senior. That will be on the agenda. Item number thirteen, from the Department of Management Services, and ordinance authorizing the technology upgrade project for the Fire Department. That will be agenda pending. And the question I have is, did this go through, and it wasn't indicated in the memo, did it go through the necessary procurement process? Um, I didn't see that, but I but I'll ask the Commissioner if that if that happened. Um, item number fourteen, from the Department of Public Safety, and ordinance authorizing the temporary temporary suspension and enforcement of parking meters in designated municipal garages and lots to promote holiday shopping, December ninth through twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, from eight AM to eight PM and this and December thirty-first for the entire day. That will be on the agenda. Item number fifteen, from the Department of Public Safety, and ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Safety to solicit competitive bids for city towing services. That will also be agenda pending. Um, there were some dates which were off in the memo. So I have to talk to Commissioner Gibson about that. Uh, item number sixteen, that will be on the agenda, from City Council. A local law to enact Chapter Ninety Bamboo of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon to ban running bamboo in the city of Mount Vernon. Item number seventeen will be on the agenda from City Council. An ordinance, uh, mending the vehicle and traffic regulations for commercial vehicles in Chapter two, five, six, Sections eleven and twenty-three of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon. And last but not least, item eighteen, also from City Council, that will be on the agenda and ordinance, uh, mending Chapter two, four, three, dash, two, nine, entitled Maximum Fees for Towing and Storage. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Um, can you hear me? Councilman Potteet?
Yeah, hold on. Let me go off camera and then pull the laptop to my ear. One second.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we have Commissioner Norman here. So I would like for her to come up and speak on item number twelve. The renaming of the Fulton Avenue Firehouse for Fire Lieutenant Joseph L. Miles, Senior. If you don't mind, please come up.
Sure. Also, if she could speak to item number thirteen as well.
And item number, well, let's start with item number twelve and then, um, item number thirteen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just to give us some background. Commissioner Norman? Yeah, no, no, no. Item number twelve, and then we're going to ask you about item number thirteen. Item number twelve is the renaming of the firehouse. Hold on for the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you. So the background is Lieutenant Joseph Miles, I did quite a bit of research, was the third man of color to be hired in the Mount Vernon Fire Department in nineteen sixty-three. The first individual, Eddie Williams, Jr., was hired in nineteen fifty-two. So almost eleven years later, Lieutenant Miles at the time.
Recording in progress.
Firefighter Miles. And Eddie Williams, Jr., and an individual named Charlie Smith. So looking, doing a lot of research and speaking with his wife, who I've met. Firefighter Miles was very instrumental in trying to advocate to get more people of color hired in the fire department at that time, in the fifties and the sixties. He was very instrumental with, um, joining up and collaborating with members. There was two or three members at the time in the in your shelf fire department, maybe one person in Yonkers of color to facilitate to stand up the Westchester County Vulcans Society, again, to advocate for more fair hiring practices and of men of color. Um, through the history, I researched that a second individual firefighter, Smith, left after seven years in the fire department. Mr. Noble Norman came on. So there was a period from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen eighty when it was only four people of color at the time. Um, in the history of advocating to bring on more people for fair hiring, also led Lieutenant Joseph Miles. He was very instrumental in starting what is called the Vulcan Consent Decree, the Department of Justice lawsuit, which they did, um, was very successful. And from that period on, in nineteen seventy to almost ten years later, uh, we had about twelve people of color in the job. But today, due to his efforts and the Vulcan Consent Decree, um, just in fifteen years, in nineteen seventy-eight, correction, I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-five, eighty-seven, we had twenty people of color, which we have two or three of those officers still here today. Um, Mr. Miles, his wife says, and there's members who just recently retired, our own Chief Al Everett, Deputy Chief Salah Houdin, they did work with this individual. They gave me some background in history. And they said before they came on, there was a time when Lieutenant Joe Miles was a loner by himself in the Mount Vernon Fire Department, trying to advocate for things. So having said all that, he did, um, continue to do his job, learn his job, where he was promoted to lieutenant. He was the second individual of color. Al Everett was promoted in in, um, uh, January, and he was promoted three months later. So he was the second man of color to make lieutenant. And by all records indicate that he was a great officer, a great leader in Mount Vernon, and he wasn't afraid to stand up and advocate for his community, for people of color. Um, so his history, again, is that he stood up sometimes by himself, and he just advocated for what was right. And today, we have more people from our community in the fire service, um, able to afford that good opportunity. So I put these information together. Again, his wife gave me some information. Uh, the chiefs, I told you, who just retired, who worked with him. And I went through the records that we do have and put this together and ask you all if we can name that firehouse after Lieutenant Joe Miles, Senior, who was so instrumental in the fire service in our community.
Commissioner, um, I just have one quick question. I remember Lieutenant. Is he still alive?
No.
Oh, he's not still alive?
No.
See, we gotta start honoring people while they are alive.
Yes, yes. Um, his wife is still here and Joseph Miles, Junior. So again, um, for his family's legacy, there's members of his family still here.
Thank you so much. The reason why I wanted you to speak on that, I remember Lieutenant Miles. I I just didn't know that he had, uh, he had passed away. And he really, I mean, I think a perfect word for him is a trailblazer, right? I mean, he really led the way for, um, other minority firefighters, which I think is, uh, very important, especially in this community, for people to see people like themselves in that type of, uh, service career. Um, anybody else have any other questions regarding the renaming of the firehouse?
I don't know. I don't have any, uh, questions. I think it's an awesome gesture, and I think the community would, um, really like that. Uh, I know his wife is still a resident of Mount Vernon here on North Third Avenue, Ms. Wanda.
Yes.
Uh, you know, so I've known her for years as well. So I just know them from growing up in the community. And I think it would be an awesome gesture to have this done and have his wife attend that and his his, um, daughter and everyone. Yeah.
Uh, if there's no other questions. Uh, item number thirteen was Management Services, Department of Management Services, and ordinance authorizing the technology upgrade project for the Fire Department. So I believe Councilman Potteet had, um, a question regarding whether this followed the procurement policy. And also, my question is, I believe, is, um, Director Perez on the line? Uh, wanted to make sure that that was a coordinated effort between Management Services and the Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am. It was.
Okay, Commissioner Perez, uh, would you like to, Director Perez was proper title, would you like to speak on this, uh, technology upgrade?
Sure. Uh, working with the Fire Department, uh, the mayor tasked me with taking a look at the environment to see where we needed to do upgrades. So working with the with the department, working with firefighter Ralph, we went and took a look at the technologies they're currently using and was out of date. And we put together the items that we felt were, uh, the most cost-effective items to upgrade within the department. That includes, uh, computers and taking the Red Alert System to a cloud-based solution, which will give them additional functionality, uh, as well as upgrading their call recording system. And those are the items that we currently have and the proposal for the upgrade. In terms of the procurement process for the computers, I did get multiple quotes for those. And for the Red Alert portion, all we're doing is moving from the on-premise solution to a cloud-based solution. Uh, continuing the same, uh, continuing to work with the same vendor. Uh, the other, uh, the other portion, the voice recorder, um, we didn't do anything special in terms of procurement. Uh, Councilman Potteet, what would you like to see specifically for that?
Okay.
Just wondering, were there any MWBE vendors, uh, that we looked looked at in this effort?
The Red Alert System, it's the existing system, so we didn't, uh, move away from that system. In terms of where we actually make the purchase, one of the, uh, if we decide to do it through, uh, through Sourcewell, one of the vendors that we currently do purchases from is an MWBE contractor.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Director.
One, I'm sorry, and one additional thing I do want to say regarding that, if we do do Sourcewell for the Red Alert System, it will, uh, increase the price by ten to fifteen percent because they'll do an add-on, uh, to do the contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Director.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Brown, please.
Commissioner Perez, can you, when you say the upgrading of the eighteen computer and display, what exactly is that?
Basically, they have a bunch of desktops and systems that the the Fire Department is very resourceful. They've put together a bunch of systems, uh, that they've cobbled together. Uh, so I'm looking to basically bring all of them up to date. So basically upgrading their older machines to, uh, to new devices.
Does that mean new machines or does that mean you're updating the software?
No, buying brand-new machines.
You're buying? I can't hear you.
Yes, buying brand-new machines for them.
So to Councilman Potteet's question is, did we follow the procurement process? So for new software, we would need the need to be going out for, um, since it's over the purchase contract amount, this should be going out for bid, right? Or we do we have a, um, a contract that we're piggybacking on?
We can, the the vendors that I got quotes from are all on Sourcewell. So what I did was that I got I got multiple quotes for them.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, is this going to be for prior fire prevention in the offices also or just strictly with dispatch? I think I'm a little confused as to where the upgrade is taking place.
This will be in multiple locations, so we're going to be doing dispatch. Uh, so basically, wherever the computers are located, I will be upgrading the the older machines.
Okay, so each firehouse plus fire prevention. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. So there won't be any old equipment around anymore, correct?
It upgraded.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Perez, thank you so much, uh, for being present tonight. Were there any other questions for, uh, Public Safety and Codes? Okay, moving on. Finance and planning.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, number nineteen, this is from City Council. An ordinance authorizing the establishment of custodial accounts for the management of funds related to specific development projects. And that's going to be on the agenda. Number twenty, from the City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon declaring itself as lead agency for Mount Vernon East zoning amendments and scheduling a public hearing. And that that's also on the agenda. And that is only two items that I have.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, um, any questions? All right. Hearing none. Do we have any comments? Anything that anybody would like? Okay, Councilwoman Brown is right there, ready to talk.
I am. I am. Um, you know, one of the things that I heard while Commissioner Norman was talking about renaming the firehouse is, um, that Fire Lieutenant Miles was an advocate, right? And and I really want wonder what he would say about having a firehouse that is falling apart, named after him. All right, so I really want to hear what the update is on the Capitol Projects, uh, board, what it is on fixing these firehouses that our our firemen go to every day that are kind of falling apart. So that's what I would like to hear.
Anybody else? Um, I happen to piggyback on that. I think that you're bringing up a very good point. Uh, we definitely have to have an update regarding the Capitol Projects. And, uh, the mayor will be here for, um, anybody who, um, has been wondering about the animal shelter. The mayor will be here, uh, tomorrow night, tomorrow evening. Um, once we leave the meeting tonight, I could give her a heads up. You know, maybe she could, um, speak on, uh, some of the ARPA funding and some of the HUD one oh eight loan, uh, that the city has secured for some of the upgrades. Uh, and see where we are with the Fulton Avenue one and see what, uh, what they have in store for that particular firehouse. A very good, very good point. Um, does anybody have anything else? Councilman Thompson?
Yes, um, just on another note, I'd like everyone to keep, um, our, um, previous deputy clerk, Donna Jackson's family in the prayers. Uh, she lost her brother. And also our, um, director of, um, OEM, he just lost his grandfather. Mike Montez lost his grandfather. So keep those families in your prayers. And, uh, make sure you check in on your loved ones. Don't just call them when you need things, but just call and say hi and see how everyone is doing. And the weather's getting cold. Make sure you're checking on the elderly and see what's needed because, uh, we're all going through it. But like I always say, we can all make it when we do it together. Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, Director, I mean Deputy. Councilman Potteet, do you have something to say?
No, you you, uh, said it for for me, that there is a Section one oh eight loan committee uh, that I believe is working on the firehouses. So we, when we do talk to the mayor tomorrow, we should get that update.
So who, I mean, Council President, sorry, may I?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Brown.
So who can give us an update on the Capitol Projects Board, though?
Councilman Boxill.
Um, the the last we spoke, um, our commissioner, he was updating some lists that he he went out to, uh, he was working with a consultant to put those priorities in in, um, in line. I mean, we we all know that he's been out for a few weeks, so we're just gonna, I guess, circle back. Maybe the mayor has some updates with that.
Yeah, and I think that if we, um, can't get, um, an update by tomorrow, we can definitely, uh, send a letter to the mayor like we did with, um, the animal shelter for the next meeting, so just so that, um, we can have a comprehensive view rather than, I I hate to give her twenty-four hour notice, you know, good, so that she could get all the facts together through all the different, um, departments. Um, with that being said, if there's anything else that anybody would like to say, if not, I would like to close the meeting and we will see you tomorrow, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM. Uh, the one thing that I ask everybody, it is getting colder out. Please check on our seniors. I think that's very important. If you know that there's a neighbor out there that might be alone or might have family that lives far away, please check on them. I think that's very important. If you know that there's a neighbor out there that might be alone or might have family that lives far away, please check on them, see if they need anything. Um, and again, you know, we're here to serve you, the people of Mount Vernon. With that being said, I'd like to bid you guys good night, and we will see you tomorrow at seven PM.